It is the 8th of May, 2021. Vice President Mariur, Senator, have been asked to move the motion to adjourn from the House of Delegates for the time being. But we can't refuse. We will not let the citizens go without our consent. The House of Delegates will be called upon to discuss the matter. Mr. President.
Senator Lenzar Vasilius.
Yes.
Senator Roba Yigikua Inabo.
Yes.
Senator Stevenson J. Cuartei.
Yes.
Senator Tichay Imbrur Mozau.
Yes.
Senator Mark Ebra Rudim. Senator Umi Sangabau.
Yes.
Senator Kasugi El Tapsungino.
Yes.
Senator Andrew Tabalwal.
Yes.
Senator Salvador Sadoy Talams.
Yes.
Senator Mason Whipps.
Yes.
Senator Cecilil Eldebel. Vice President Kray Mariur.
Yes.
President Okuntz Paulis.
Yes. Mr. President, Maria Corum. Maria Corum, Senator Rudim, Senator Eldebel, excuse me, I am not going to discuss the matter with the president because I am not going to discuss the House of Delegates. I am not going to discuss the Senate. Senator Mariur.
So, President, I am not going to discuss the matter with the members of the Senate, because I am not going to discuss the House of Delegates. The item 4 in the document, the message from the President and the document, item 5. Item 6, a report of communication from the Department of Commerce. The document, item 7, communication from the House of Delegates. I read the communication, item 11-200. The way the government has received the CD1 from the House Bill 11-134-15S, HD2, ST7. The CD1 was received. Item 8, sending committee reports. Item 9, reports of special committee. I read the conference committee, item 11-9. I read the conference committee report, item 11-9.
If you want to move the motion, I am not going to discuss the matter with the chairman of the House of Delegates, Senator Inabo, for the reported report. Senator Inabo.
So, President, I am not going to discuss the matter with the members of the Senate. The conference committee report, item 11-9, the report of the House Bill 11-134-15S, HD2, ST7. The House Bill 11-134-15S, the president, Suraan Whipps Jr., and the senator, Raul Lauro, is on March 15, 2024. It is March 18, 2024, and the House of Delegates is appointed and the House of Delegates committee is appointed. But we will not add the bill, the supplemental budget, and the rest of the FY2024. The bill, the 100 million, is appointed by the House of Delegates. I read it, I read it. The House Bill 11-134-15S, HD2, the number of senators, the number of senators, the number of senators is on May 10, 2024. On May 29, 2024, the House Bill 11-134-15S, HD2, and the ST7, the House of Delegates rejected the version of the Senate, the ST7, and it is on May 12, 2024. I read the conference committee of the House of Delegates. The bill, the presidential committee, the House of Delegates, the vice chairman of the House of Delegates, the House of Delegates is not supported. And the Senate has appointed the conference committee. The Senate president has appointed the committee of the House of Delegates. The financial committee, the vice chairman of the House of Delegates, the vice president, Senator Roba Inabo, Senator Kray Mariur, the vice president, the vice president of the Senate, Senator Andrew Tabalwal, Senator Stevenson J. Cuartei, Senator Umi Sangabau, Senator Kasugi El Tapsungino, Senator Mason Whipps, Senator Cecilil Eldebel, the chairman of the Senate, Senator Tichay Imbrur Mozau, Senator Salvador Sadoy Talams, and Senator Lenzar Vasilius. But the conference committee of the Senate, I read it, the conference committee of the House, it is on June 4. I read it, I read it. The House of Delegates rejected the House. I read the committee, I read the House Bill 11-134-15S, HD2, ST7. I read it, I read it. But I read the House of Delegates, I read the House of Delegates, I read it, I read it. I read it, I read it. The president, I read the House Bill 11-134-15S, HD2, ST7. But the president said the budget for the executive branch, I read it, I read it. I read the budget for the executive branch, 54.6 million. I read the RPL 11-131, 11-132. On the day of the president, I read 62.8 million. The House rejected 62.9 million. The Senate approved the budget for the executive branch, 60.1 million. The House, I read it, I read it. The budget for the executive branch, 60.1 million. And the House rejected the budget for the Ministry of Agriculture, Environment, Farm. But I read it, I read it. I read the adjustment for the section, the committee report. I read pages 2, page 3, I read pages 3. But I read the life stock fund, I read the earmark. I read page 4. I read the earmark, although the budget for the Ministry of Agriculture, Fisheries and Environment. I read the Bureau of Agriculture, I read the Bureau of Agriculture. I read the earmark, I read the earmark. The Bureau of Agriculture, I read it, I read it. The way the House rejected the earmark. I read the earmark, I read the earmark. The additional budget for the Bureau of Agriculture. I read the executive branch budget, I read it. I read the changes, I read the amount. President, the budget for the festival of arts, I read it, I read it. I read the technical error, I read it. The last year, I read it, I read it. I read the small, I read it. I read the changes, I read it. I read page 5. I read the changes, I read it. I read the changes, I read it. I read the local fund, I read the local fund. The last year, I read it. President, I read it. I read the employee fund, I read the 15,000. The House rejected 40,000. The House rejected 40,000. I read it, I read it. I read it, I read it. I read it, I read it. The change, the retirement, the disabled. I read it, I read it. I read the employment earnings. I read it, I read it. I read the tax refund, I read the retired citizens and disabled assistance, $480. I read it, I read it. The section 27, I read the section 11, for the tax refund. I read the 40,000, the 40,000. I read page 7. I read the amendment, the legal. Although the special prosecutor, public auditor. I read it, I read it. I read it, I read it. I read it, I read it. I read the rule, the president, I read it. I read the special prosecutor, I read the public auditor. I read it, I read it. I read it, I read it. I read the earmark. I read the positions, I read the appointment. The Senate, I read it, I read it. I read the amendment, I read it. I read it, I read it. I read the flag, I read it. I read the certificate of registration, I read it. I read the board, I read it. I read the expiration, I read it. I read the change, I read it. I read the word, I read it. I read it, I read it. I read the exact location of the port, I read it. I read it, I read it. I read the amendment, I read it. Import, export, exempt from import, PGST import. I read $400, I read $1,000. I read it, I read it. I read the amount, I read it. I read it, I read it. I read 5,000, I read it. I read it, I read it. I read it, I read it. I made sure that the impact of the money. I read the personal gift, I read the exemption. I read the personal complaint. I read the complaint, I read it. The Senate rejected the youth baseball league. After I read it, I read it. I read 25,000. I read the amount of the budget. 119.2 million, and 132 million of the budget. I request 136 million. The House rejected 132, I read it. I read the difference, I read it. I read the ST7. I read it, I read it. I read the differences, I read it. I read the chairman of the House of Delegates, the House of Delegates, I read it. I read the time, I read it. I read the House of Delegates. I read the members of the Senate, I read it. I read the report, I read the support of the members of the Senate, I read the supplemental budget.
So, President. Senator Inabo, I am not concerned about the committee report. I am not concerned about the committee report. Senator Mariur.
So, President, I am not concerned. The members, I read it. The president, I read the report. I read the auditor, the special prosecutor. I read it, I read it. 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 The president, I read it. I read it, I read it. I read the advertisement. I read it, I read it. I read it, I read it. I read it, I read it. The special prosecutor, the president. I read it, I read it. 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 I read the conference committee report.
So, President. Senator Mariur, Senator Cuartei.
So, President, I am not concerned. I am not concerned with the vice chairman. The members are negotiators of the conference committee report. The president, I read the reservation. I read the first and second meeting, I am not going to repeat. Mr. President, I read the RPL 11-13. The 11-13, titled Fiscal Responsibility Act. The president read it, it is November 18, 2021. I read it, I read it. I read it, I read it. I read the budget. I read the role, I read the role. I read the rule, I read the CC. I read the best practice, I read the physical management. I read the budget. I read the RPL, Mr. President, section 108. I read the economic forecast, five years. I read prior year, current year, budget year, two additional years. I read the report, I read the gross domestic product per capita GDP. I read consumer price, population, employment, tourism statistics. I read credit statistics. I read the economic forecast. The fiscal forecast, the FAA. Mr. President, I read section 11. I read half a year economic and fiscal update prepared by the Minister of Finance. I read the second quarter report, I read the physical update. I read the half a year economic update. I read the budget, I read the last year. I read the required by law. I read it. Section 3, Chapter 3, Title 40, Cyclical Reserve Fund. I read the budget shortfall, state of emergency and outstanding debts. I read the fact, I read the fact. Mr. President, I read the compact. I read a 25 million dollar loan. I read the security, I read the 1% interest. I read the cyclical reserve fund. I read the question. I read the emergency of COVID. I read the vaccine. I read the height. I read the return, I read the money. I read the team, I read the money. I am not concerned, Mr. President, I read the conference report. I read with reservation.
So, President. Senator Cuartei, I am not concerned. Senator Mozau.
So, President. Senator Cuartei, the members of the Senate signed with reservation. Mr. President, I read the politics, I read the politicians. I read the politics, I read the science. It is an art of compromise. Mr. President, I read it. I read the chair, the members of the conference committee of both houses, the House of Delegates. Mr. President, I read it. I read the reservation, I read the signature. I read one major policy issue, Mr. President. I read it, I read it. I read the offer, I read the amendment. I read the showbar, I read the GRT. Mr. President, I read the PGST. I read the PGST, I read the tax. Mr. President, I read the amendment. I read the last session. I read the real time, I read it. I read the showbar, I read it. I read it, I read it. I read the chair, the members of the Senate, the House of Delegates. I read the support of the committee report.
So, President. Senator Mozau, Maria Hudo, Digue Hudo. Senator Vasilius.
President, I read it. I read line 6. Retired citizens and disabled citizens assistance. I read the report. I read page 6. I read the last wording. I read the language. I read it. I read it. I read it only for this physical year, 2024. I read the committee report. Page 6. Section 24. Page 6, I read it. Section 24. Section 46. I read it. Sel over, sel page seven, blen strike out er sel language, sel wa se a payment tra four eighty, for fiscal year twenty twenty four. A plus one tal mer tal section. Mung sel elao, mungabati agumeser tak, mungsel more continuous, bodol tov rini, lesa refund.
Senator Inavo.
Oh Mister Presidente, ah, ganjorn, Senator Basilius. Na kambitiam lo, o meser tiang, igal tablo blay, egadu meser sel four hundred eighty dollars sel muru. A retired, digel mla mo sixty degree, ediregal motigel, al disabled citizens. Ma'language sel ngi, di lulu wa se, ah, motigel adal mla mo sixty degree. Ediha employment earnings etir, ediha business income etir. Ya, igal kambitisam lo, o'mabati sege, ekmu la se, ndimo with no employment earnings. Emru ngasel lolkor ngi last sentence, el mil ngut, ah, adi o iset, mu la se. Gal retired citizens, ngel mla mo yangalakla, agiril sixty. Ediha employment earnings rini, ma'diha business income rini. Eh, ediha address apel, mo'malay atavlo, ngal payment tra four hundred eighty dollars, ra el fiscal year. Sege dal lolkor ngi, ma'sege da di balgulak mu la se, asuguma, kamla mo tax refund, lekulu rior. Ndikun mla mo sixty game, ndi konse apem al malay tiang. Mung after maths discussion with ra adra la'house. Ituwa se, sel adulwa se with no employment earnings, amal di osisiwim sege del. El, el kamangatel sentence ngar sel end. Mung already ngire mal diha'm, diha'm urure, el ngar ngia page chagarraw. Lek agadu madengel, asesung bulu urure, ngar ngia page chagarraw, eku'mo'malaya, mo already ka, malaya agagila le, eh, tax refund. Mung akondasen korak mulway se, Senator Basilius.
Andi ang gamso langi madam, eh Presidente, ali di hutangal malamoni. And ah, kotende hal konsur naktiogera, le mil ngut sel language. Amlegri ka wa singa, tal ngut sel language, ngar ngi, sel raha ngi, imbalgulak mutian di mo'malamoni, ma'udung only for this fiscal year twenty twenty four.
Senator Inavo.
Oh Mister Presidente, sege del, sege del wa se section forty six, esel ewngel. Ah, o isel wa se, galu do datu, el dimura expenditure, ma obligation, ra F Y twenty twenty four. Mung mal di sege del fiscal year, ndakase el monexel fiscal year, asu mung monexel fiscal year, ngire del guk mutul mo'masado rini, adal di ra kulu la. Ndikun, podora mil saado rini, ah before, wa sing, sel fifty dollars ra social security, al abay wingil bodon daswar ngi. Sege da korong so del de, sege den, Senator Basilius, sulan.
Yam sulangi, madam lakri ro duksweko.
Senator Mosau. Sula, Mister Presidente, eti abi clarification eh, Chairwoman Inavo. Ah, kamlo report, al wa se, agadu la, ah, ngusel mle, wal four hundred talalol, al mo thousand dollar. Eh, ndiga malamoni kulu wa se, asugum ngif, ma'udung personal item ra, eh exempt. Se'mo'mgatakliseling, se'mbulgulak mu la sense edak, ah, adal sentaklal rapostel may. Eh, chegar sel wa sing gif, eh exempt, embulu la sing exempt. Ma'udung adal ngara, ikel bela, eh sendakoklara, asel akanteneel may, eh wa se, a personal items, mung exempt. Se'mgataklisie, o igeraltame, ngatma uta sel thousand dollar.
Senator Inavo.
Mister Presidente, al sumgo da, hole marsel page ten. Eh, agadu mesang la wa se, gimlek wasa out er sel personal gift, mo diha personal gift. Sel one thousand dollar, atma utra personal gift, ma orderel ngara outside al may. Ling, tanee raise a ganjorn, wa sing mal koramoklo, al loophole, I mean, el mo, korawayal, al loophole, asel atakslo. Mung, lutek sege del gifte, emeru ngi, ya, a thousand, ah, five thousand dollar, ah, a taxi. Mung january, mo december, mung, asuguma, gohuk ordera one clock lem al may. Eh, after om orderal five times, ing namutakasam, el mutu ordera six time, el monge, agirim al, al paya tax, namutia kat thousand dollar. Sege da horal language ser sing.
Senator Mosau.
Sulangi, Mister Presidente, akki, il mutal follow up, leng, ida uktom daswar, ida ngar bela. Di la trigel ngara outside, luku sorilol ngasera, ar adra bliri. Muttukti tirilol durokla oklil may, trigetamontaraqatel thousand dollar al dide. Sege diya, domeser ngi, leng, tabtoka ngara ikel bela, sorilol ngasera, ar adal ngara alsel bela. Eh, oku de agadu bo'malamol limit rini, wa sense idio lol durokla, up to thousand dollar. Ah, ul mningisel ul dasula se, me da ba ida ngabati tiang, eh oku re, domesera uktara ongil. Tele tal, leng, wabla bodorobra, adal ngara ikel bela, salol ngasera, ader belaol, lol ngasering. Se appoint ngar ngi, Mister Presidente, sulan.
Senator Wips.
Sula, Presidente, sel korahel prachirman smodik tiang, akmal understand ra sel ganjorn la Senator Mosau. Di, tiagide el section ra kanfri, amnot tal gibal conscientious, sel obengela house of delegates. Tamal mle sensitive, gerela possible abuse, er tiagide el section. Ma'gege del korab esel language, sel sili sebel, el luliya limit, mung, antela one calendar year. Eh, up to five thousand dollars, after se aada. You gotta remember, initially, it was four hundred only, you know, se a limit, omengalakta four hundred, ta kapera, ala ngalin. So this was a way to give something back to the consumer, ar adra blu, give them a little bit of a break. And then, it's one of those things, house of delegates was sensitive to, mung, kambitia uknora igal sabel. Eh, sege del kuk section, el masado ra important. Ta di regan mulu ganjorn, el gerel sel section, asugum agadu loliadi gif rini. Ling, sel du gifting, ndiaga limit rini, you can say, it's a, it can be a small item, it can be a large item. And so the language was drafted in a way, and work something out with the house of delegates. At the same time, agadu rule tiang, ulataksel ige del mo wel gamra, ar adadel soril mutu mer may. Mutea, asuguma, guluklalo ra klalo, ra outsider, a ikel abulu bela, eh gaplanan move mer may. With this new provision, none of that will be taxable, because it's your own personal item. Di, a gift, sege da, mlo, koratiribil ishul, obengela, galiksel ige ra house. Kambitim nor sel sabel, el compromise, eti language, agadu nawat al bagas, and maybe it's something we can look at in the near future. Trial address, eti al ishul, lo saado rini, Senator Mosau, sulan, eh Mister Presidente.
Senator Shung.
Presidente, mal, diamral, no korat tal gibal, klo discussion rini, ma'tirigle, al sabel, eku'uspe tiagide example. Al suguma, ak musia two thousand dollars, el sege del personal gift, al ngilul mo serba, emolimit rini thousand. Eh, l- l- suguma, ak musira evil, two thousand dollars, el may, ngabul, ngabul tax, esel another thousand dollars. Di okmum tadi luk asa gifte exempted, yakmara uklengesendrini mora, like my relative, eh ngia sendrini mer ngar. Mung, wabul, sege da mo loophole ngi, ma'adra house, adiregal koramlo point out rini, buta, uli ito kuasime, bo'da, the limit is sege del. Ling, arada mustartel abuse system eh, Mister Presidente, ma'luila ganjorn, eh agadu mal trial mle, akamodek tege ige del ganjorn. Sel considering ra, adiregal kuasere babya ta, ma'adada diregal mo ordera klalo outside, el diregal kukel partil. Ngar ngi, ige el babya klal, el dibusere bela, egi da uspe el malara outside. Sula, Mister Presidente, alsum se sel kwamne help, al discussion.
Senator Mosau.
Diak, mal mosau ra clarification, and then, mral, eh, se reality. Mral ngar ngat tal ledel ma ikel bela, muteal, dangalila dalong okra bela, tiang ala filler ngar ngara ikel bela. Mung, wabla bodorobertil, lol ngasera, ar adal ngara, alsel bela, mung, swal di point out rini. Eh, please, eh, by the way, ngasel, sumakli, tiang, eti amal kloa impact rini, sulan, eh Mister Presidente.
Senator Basilius.
Yakan, akondasen lamawila discussion, and di, gerel magatakli, malmungil, leng, ak support ra, ah, a report, mla magatmokla. Ak tirigamle saing, laringa W R, ngage Presidente, ma'bekel senators. Andi, podobakaklit tal language, wa se oing. Sel domesai gal sel section, sir tiang, emoblakatakl, wa sing one thousand dollars, a limited items, ngar outside, el mitmur, alsel bela. Andi ngar ngia value, ya value rini, up to five thousand. Malsuguma kol tuaklo klem, ikan, one el adas, belo tuap, awar da fat. Andi sege del value mutul uklia, ah, one, el klalo, asuguma kotu, kotu ngi, ngar ngia value rini, up to five thousand, andi mor sege demru. Asuguma ordera personal klo klem, ngarang, el, el, may, let's say, asuguma, ak, ndiaga amsera bela, asebel, mral may replace ramseramlik. Ak mora outside, el mora kwam, ak mral atar ramsero, oduruklin may, in total value, same of five thousand, that's it. Se, a limit, ak, one el adra per year, sulan, eh Presidente.
Senator Shung.
Presidente, akondasen selegal, way se omso de. Ah, ige el exempted, el se'mel mal value ra klalwa, up to five thousand. Malsuguma gulsisabish, sege del mesilera, mnila Senator Basilius, el five thousand. Ekuwa exemption na thousand, esel four thousand, la se one el consignment, one el, one el shipment, ya four thousand al tax rini. Andin sabemel, el mutu order another five thousand, en gukuk mutu ngat thousand, el exemption, emeru ngi, ya four thousand al tax rini. El se'mel way se ige del mol mol, sel omhitra five thousand, el exemption, sege del up to five thousand. Sege da, gama, agirim, el omnutel order, ta di tax gal, kuasigaw, kumla molaba igal, se, diregal mesat shestion, ra galiksel ige ra house, kuasay. Kudurulim, mo diha'ala lalai gal klal, el may, galel koramla el may lol taraw. Sege diya, sege da koramlo rational, er sel, kuk, galiksel ige ra house, adiregal koramlo, bring up rini, and has some merit. Again, ndiaga losado ra kuaseng one klal, wekumutel exemption, el five thousand, le limita thousand. Ah, exemption, el gawa, up to five thousand, per calendar year, sel sabemel mul, in terms of tax exempt, kuna get rini.
Senator Basilius.
Sege del item three, er sege del section A, el wa se, the total value exempted per recipient, per, ah, per calendar year. Through this section, ndiha'ak exceed ra five thousand, in value. Se ya gulguri.
Senator Nireavangala.
Sora, tal, eh Mister Presidente, kuadi clarification, al sabel korahepra discussion, tal, tal section, al dosado rini, ngara kambitir report. Agirim, el mo iber ngi, A, emora subsection I, I mean, number one, ekuwa omhitra korat threshold, eku'mose number two, eka hitra threshold. Emera number three, esem saador sel total ayim. Au ul, ne drafted way se, ak mo iber ngi, first section, second section, third section. You don't read them individually, koran, in succession, sula, eh Mister Presidente.
Senator Inavo, shomel koramodaktaga igero bu, xma.
Eh, Presidente, akmal understand ra, Senator Basilius, eti diya, we went over this for twelve seventeen la'ours, y mosau rini. Ya, tanee, eh, bring up ra, ah, wa se, ah, sel talbe tuaklal, eh one thousand dollar exempt rini. Ndikal, ndikal duh la sing five thousand exempt rini, one thousand, matadi exempt rara, one thousand. Gukmetma klal, eh di one thousand. Mumbalukmas, ndi'alkbal ngalakra, a five times, sel molara one thousand. Asuguma may ngalaklem, lamo, taxablea rogi. Mung, iba na adra la, mung, ndi'alkmal, noktukal, gim, go over this language, andi sege damla intenta. Sel intenta, mu la se, sel tal multura klo klem, eh one thousand, a exempt. Au ul, ma sel, el, el, kotel ngar pa, sel number one, awa se, ndi'alkbal ngalakra, one thousand dollar. Mung, ya, ah, number two, ak mu la se, asu mung ngalakla, palir ngi, one thousand dollar, eka exemptra, one thousand dollar, andi sel, mo ngalakkar ngi, au mung kada tax rini. Eh, sel number three, awa se, tarra, ndi'akbo may ngalakra, eh, malte la. Mung, balgulakmas, sing, asu mung lamo, five times, sel multura klo klem, eh, emeru ngi, eh ngia mla mo, taxablea, aru giral. Ling, taramle, ishul, le bring up rini, ah, mal kloa, ak klal, old order rini, eh lang la online, emetmo. Eh, ediregal, toara adra, ngut, al blur ket tiang, dathit adab bela. Mung, mal gerel, lo meser, se rogi impact, ma, ah, ige el ganjorn, asabedel, l- l- guk pasertegi, de mesang impact rini, el mutal aseser ngil, basi agadu magarang, ah, ado meser ngi, nding. Ndimla kal, ayimle, ekarik, kuwa se, la di the open rini, malaka, la'ak limit rini, sege da, gimora, amilas, meri, tal language, ngar tiang. Sege da koramle intente, Presidente, sulan.
Senator Quartey.
Presidente, sulan, selo tutel, na halo tutel amal. Mu tutel, selo tuwa airport, eh let's say, last time, akulaga, klal, balu ngi, ah, thousand one hundred, mung, exemptra thousand, eku'me tax ra tal gumiu. Tira tax ra hundred dollar. Ngar ngia, ora, pants, ting, pants rini, miseklutel mo, ekmay, et madengel wa sen, ak na ngusel, tax ra one thousand dollar, ra last week. El ngatano ra kwamme, me, la'ta pants rini, magarabo, no'tingel wa se, na magar, kuadi clarification, eh che.
Senator Inavo.
Presidente, ora ngar, ngarankle sel besel system ra tax, sel ngar ngia tax aid rini, kau. Sel, ah, sel omi, ka file ra customs, customs form, kau. Ma, atutungi, ah, sel tax aid number kau, emeru ngi, asesra tax kau, eh kapera. Ma, sel system, ah, asabedel, identifier, aru ul, adal metmul importaklal. Mung, ah, ki, omra, se sege del besel system ra tax, agiril sabel, el troha ige ige del, personal import ra, araa, sulan.
Sulangi, Senator Quartey.
Sula, Presidente, mosu besetel galindari, iga kuasay del wa igera igal question. Me ela, eh, trigal, adra, asuma, molaba, moniaba, korak, cash register etir, orak collection system etir, me ela, asu makar outside, eh may. Timkana luro, ndiaga talbe tuoba, klo se, ma ulmak korak odio ge. Ta, ta galikta tax right there, alu badehomo, fall rini, ge. Kuadi swal momdegen, korawo le.
Senator Inavo.
Um, di hatalkora, file la customs, eh Presidente, akki, madengel sege el shovail, sel lola baklal may, file la customs form. Ak, akki, madengel, asesel, babya kula ba, amliar adal tokoalal may, eh, file la customs former airport, emeru ngi, pera tax. Ma'k madengel wa sing, ngarokui, ma klu ka, tax ra imolport, mung, lamo de kula ba, amliar adal tokoalal may. Ndikun, et airport, sel petu, asuguma wa singa, obangatol, et, rule, a former kau sege, eka per ngi, esai, rawera, omusel tokoalal motova. Mung, there's a customs desk ra airport. Mung, ndiaga del post office, akondasen trigel airport, ngar ngia customs officers. I, I think, ya'urwa way se, Senator Quartey, sulan.
Senator Quartey.
Sula, Presidente, asel tal, Malungil, ondas modi.
I get the token, maybe the contract, so I will be the president. The Maladi, I don't know, I will.
Aurelil. Eh, ghamdengi, Mr. President, sel bol temela ganfri ra dongolela haus ma senet, ente melam ghamad. Ne se realitira urior. Gada gaibda akra uldasu. Din soal ghalgora dingun tealtel, orengasulela atangaqal vice chair gamitira haus, delegate otobda, klo blur ngatpan. Ngeya walulge dertel urior, le tiha haus bill. Mong asenet ah oring sertir, eh, nga ogidertel urelela ganfri. Ah, delegate otobda riliha table. Walulumov ayel differences ra asenet mahaus, selir ursil mor ghamam rogu. In section by section, in manmle alaor our delegates, el questioner aguk senet, reposicioner asenet, mumnor niakura understanding, ndimnagal ghorlora, gur asentio seltan. Magimlo finis ra ona sectionel momre. En gamba ghalmesel begining, eh, se, gabongi re delegate, ndirge ah model questioner gomil mora senetors. Eh, mergo, me gada sentio, gada goongi loventrir ndiak. Eh, guk mu, mu bil moranex, moranex, mu, mnalatogu ayel dilu atangaqal senator Vasilius. Tiha, eh, yul mor ngir, eh, uklok, afternoon. Eh, mumnor niakura snak, mumnor niakuhi, mumnor niadiner. Din dimnaga midnight snake, Mr. President, le tiha mulotar klok ra mututaw, er bebir ghamam amol ngalok, nding ngwaisai, sel ora laurior ngirengwaisai. Mong, mral, we went through the policies, we went through the numbers on the first day, eh, came to an agreement with shock me. Tiha ngugu mu, ghamal process. Eh, second day, in dimno small working group, finalize a language, which I appreciate ra sel effort, no same, tiha gi dal ngarmadadre la, afternoon, eh, adra haus agil ngir ngir, atutaw, eh, gi tiha msaadre ngireng. Eh, sel politics, na gha, Mr. President, ah, tiha gi. Ngaha, of course, ndagal soal ayegro gultogon ngal seltan. Din akua senetorkuartel ngaring sel diregal mumngarir ngak. Eh, ngiregal dimmer gakli, eh, goongi. Eh, tiha gi de, Mr. President, abokteligom ladim dengel betlaad. Sel togora minimum wage. Ngeel imol ngal garbelau, tirgeel tru, tirgeel dar, tirgeel talte lael, ndagudung, ndagudung lena ambere. But they will get a raise on October 1st, al suguma President asay ngir tiha mola. Le ngamo mandey tra olbi ra gululau, a hausana goongi ngiri, a ganfri na goongi ngiri, eh, hope begi damo goongi ngirela lodooson. Eh, sel gi dal togora minimum wage, which, I've been here a long time. Sel abek membera senet, Mr. President, eh, rabok avall. Eh, seven years later, of course, I've been here for 12 years. This is my 12th year. A first, first term ngagin, sel RPPN andas one, se ngiru mu, 325. Eh, ndenegadam aratene lolebi, eh, tiha gi 11, and seven years later, ndongi tiha, eh, finaling, sel mura seltan supplemental budget, tamak mal oheng our efforts our betlaad. Eh, mobentrir our betlaad, eh, supporter tiha, eh, house bill, 11 dash 134, 15 S, HD2, ST7, CD1. Mong saoratel, Mr. President.
Digamona. Digang eh, oh, Senator Mariur.
Oh, tiha di, point, ndi information, eh, President. Akri galomarala se ayel, mergo ayel, betogol gora, mojol hotel gora malasina merula ayegro belau, eh, debelopre bela, President. Ki omarala se sel ngara FIB, eh, se ayel, tirgeel ngalgar belau, mo uror ayel, kombalil metru ra FIB, FIB tirgeel sel bol stat lauror, etangara sel minimum wage government. El al suguma ngawa minimum wage government, fadhanat, o stat se gi demrano. Ma se gi di abai, ku mrala se gi di ngaringi, eh, diregal ngari ayel ngara PCC, la igal tirgeel togra PCC, diregal mo, ma certificate, tirgeel ngari ayel udo, ulpostipil mongma bol ura, ngiril kombalim, alu ngiril gerablur belau. Eh, gi gi da, diregal sped lauror, lo si garolel, engmora ngalgar belau. Gi gi de, President, msulang.
Senator Sumino.
Sumratelige, Mr. President, eh, mal umitasi sinme betlaade. Mr. President, takmal, loreng seyalal dadu, eh, mal, mal gora pow, ndeparte sel ganfri. Akuk, mna ngati el legal experience ra togora, ldo urior, eh, waisai dal 11 hours, el dadong ok, lombasu. Urio labentir are different, el aden, tra al gaigetsal dasu. Orengasulela chairman, chairwoman inabo, eh, gi gi damamduul ngirela ganfri chairman, Vice Chair, ah, delegate otobdu. Mesel guk, dasu el milu, ler ngil mu, waisai di atletelela ganfri. Mong, gada, gata ngadam etmona, togora, eh, mofaisa wa gi gi dal, el dadu, el, betoga ngara selt, eh, gada tra mismo ok, muvalul dasu. Eh, guilbetlaad, mong 11 hours, ten minutes, attemel seltan timering. Eh, ngaigetsalaindu. Eh, ga gi da, disoal menson, el ngirela ayel guk, chairman, eh, chairman, gara community, culture, youth and sports affairs, ayel ngasunu ra Facebook. Gada orengasulela, re betlaad, el ngirel sel lontila, ministry, melu liit sel 40,000. Mong, temirale, lo ague, eh, tiha ludod, mosave la President, eh, sekiro udo, mosemrale, ndi ayegre dal, na tov del, bo, 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 sentio ela, amoteke se gi dal ludod. Diregal orengasulela, gur senator, sel ngirela, sel lontila, atin palor al mora microgames. Gada madengi apun neto eiri, tumutelonita extra 70, mong 350 ogongi ngiri. Beti gi dal ngarmadadre la, al time, eh, a time, is of the essence, eh, ngirel sel program, lemla mo, three times lomos, ma, oli tanyaswa President, eh, mong dadu ayel airline, extend ra de, tirgeel ayel, tirgeel, tirgeel reports. Gada mal orengasulela, re betlaad, el ngirela, ayel ul desu, el ngirela, ayegre du program, selin, togora siugam, ma togora sports, eh, ngirela ngalige, gada mal, mulai imadel ngirel. A time, atelgi billo, osago dal, ndi gi dal tiha matmokla uru melang, lasa bedel mitagel dedalain. Al asta, disoal di momenton, sel bela, 10 baseball league. Gada madengi, musa du, duide, eh, gada, mlego towaratir, le tiha gi damil gatmokla, Mr. President. Gada umrak, mas, ndagal saba edel, matmokla ngil dil, lu ulatogor udo puay, even mal dilge gareya amantrengi, dil suguma, ndega informationel dagai, malu, ndega clown dengel, do dengel ngirela togora, ndega saba edel goongi ngiri. Se ya mle, stand, stand dergeel, ngirela sel udo, le, ndimnaga, teellet sel program, la approach ra guk gamitira sportsa senet, eh, la bir tir, el ngirela aldasu, le, dimnaga haus of delegates, eh, meru la urior. Mesel agibor ganfri agimla adadu, emloka dadengei, ndi aldasu ra ganfri, eh, tilbir, kwa sel gora palau national Olympic committee, le, structure, organization of sports, mong saba irinu la report, tirgeel tiha udo puay. Ndigu uriu lesei, aklo mong dadu, ortirgeel az, timre ngagal president, aklo approach tirgeel adu ngitawdudu. Ma tumlo ngil smoodi, kmu ngra wisensertir, eh, tumlo haus of delegates, tuh ngitrawdudu, kmu rool anderera ministry. Magimlo, niaklo, ngil clown dengel ghamam, el ngirel sel mokte gertir, ma klinu tel gora chairwoman, eh, ask, ask, kwa semed, retract ayel tinget, eh, bo, faalosel, guk, el dadu, unba ra haus of delegates, eh, ngirel se gi du udo. Lembla, gatakla, el dadrin mahaus of delegates, ma ayel guk, plaid discuss, ngaringa mokte, ngaringa ulmatimiru ngi waisai. Agorengasulela, po chaira haus, ma senet, el ngirel tel ganfri, mal orengasule, tirgeel rogu aden, ne participate. Even tirgeel staff, lemla sel, almost 11 hours, eh, mal professional, er mu la ngaralir. Eh, ndi se gi dal, 11, 11 hours, ten minutes, eh, ngaigetsal dasu, ah, mal, I felt proud to be part ra, ah, experience, eh, waisai gi dal, saba edel urior, eh, waisel dadong ok, lomdasu, 11 hours, eh, matmokla aldasu, eh, omba ve, eh, o si krulele, ngaigetsal dasu. Sumlang, Mr. President.
Digamona. Senator Inabo.
Mr. President, maldi, eh, komi ngalgora al mutel mortel minimum wage. President, takmal, diwaisa la se, sel, mle, senate bill 11 dash nine, eh, alurtabadi tiha senet, le, introduce ser ngiya, our senators, eh, eh, sera February 2, 2021. Mong, tiha gi dal, osi ur minimum wage, eh, mo 425, mo 375, mo 425, eh, mral, mor babal, timor, 615, se double pasar ngiye, engmora haus of delegates. Ma gada mra, no ngil, masuver sel household income and expenditure surveya 2014. President, maldi swakala waisa, kmla se, base, tiha gi da, report, eh, 40% ra, ayel loblila blur belau, ah, mal, mata arbasri. Mong, tangara 2300 loblila, eh, ingamra taloblila, eh, dejal bo lena kra, eh, alte lael. Mong, se ya ulen kotaklo, tutelela minimum wage. Ma, eh, ya, bekl, loblila blur belau, or tro, ngar ngi imol at, laurior private sector. Mong, tirgeel gi dal, eh, laurior private sector, adibel oldi ngara minimum wage. Ndagal ngas aududir, le, sel, bo, do, do, ortir, englamolui rach, ogode rach laurior, nding mal diwasisi aududir. Ma, eh, ulma, malomra, tel minimum wage, mal ngar ngiya, abolgot maklin, morab togora atar belau. Di, ak madengi la se, ngar ngi impact ter ngi, morang gare shobai. Ding, ngiradal mong il subi, mong, ak, malomra, ayel, ayel olku ya, senatora, mong saul la se, ngiradal mutel mo subi, la se ngar impact ter ngi, mora gi, mal mi gare shobai. Diya, ahumra, kmla se, eh, abai ta, tunguwa minimum wage sel mor bab, mokloa disposable ingamra at. Mong, atelgi, regal, guk, mora savings, regal, moklul kombalia, sapel mora at. Mong, dirgal moklo, sel, eh, circulation or water, sel ekonomi, gi, daman dirgal help break economic growth, regi. Mong, mal, soal la se, gada mral, kmla subi, tel minimum wage, sel mora gi rogu saba edel subi ngi. Mong, ngar ngi akantil, ma klungi olel, ndi sel bodol, bodobar ngi, aklungi olela, ah, morab togora loblila blur belau, ma, malomra se gi dal la se. Mal ngiradal supporta minimum wage, ayel guk impact ter ngi, abodo misururu, le, el muteru lia, eh, household income and expenditure survey, ruliya economic study, ya, ahumda sa Minister of Finance, oldro kliya, mal lokro, ekonomi study may, ngadriga da sal mo, o subi, nding, eh, maybe ngiradal askertir, ma, ta present ter ngi mergi, damadong madengi la se, wa ra ekonomi. Ma, kli tulisegi de, Mr. President, eh, mal uli ta supporta betlaad, tel, eh, tel bill ngarmadad, sumlang.
Digamona. Sum, digamona, bukasmri tiha discussion or tiha supplemental budget, ma, agureng sergwin, digwin, mrengasuli, ra ngar aliu. Mong, mal ngil, le, temil sentio, mo, gerdigi dal, mrengasule, dar urior, ngire dal, nar murab togora ngarana memo. De, tiha minimum wage, 2021, ndi ela, ente melas sentio, ma uligadam altobder ngi, lochi gashenkiyo, mal ngil. Ak tiha ngitrigi, mrengadu la, ayel ngar alid, el ngirira adra ba, blur belau, eh, la, kdo la, blupalatiks. Se ya diontigel mergmiu, betoga palasil, degil mokle, eh, la, gada, ndagadu tirakla palasi, eh, meru ra la, amelile wekla palasi, le, ente melas sentio, mong mal ngil. Mong, ndega adal ngat tiha, ndega lol du, ra minimum wage sel mora adar belau. Di kan son regi, da guk, minimum wage sel mora adar angod oblu, ar adar angod oblu, o kontrak tenar belau. Mong, sel sumgadamru la minimum wage sel guk mora adar belau, eh, washe do, turar adar angod oblu, ngotan, ta'rsul, engle ngire dal, rullir sera, ngirel tax return. Le, adar angod oblu, a diregal laurior hara tax, eh, da gadu bustrae, eh, a, a rifandara tax, eh, guktio bustrae adar belau, mong, sel dorula, togora bol fair el mora, ngiri la adal ngar belau, laurior gi, el, ngar ngiya, contribution, ngir morte al, blur belau. Mong, togora sel 400 eiri, dollars sel mora, at tirgele retirees, ma, waisa rumi, losha ngakatar oldu ngi, le, le gorgmi ar retirees. Mong, tiha nga di, mo, ngangir ngi, ala, gubshen, lugo, ah, President, tamosa ingi, mong mira retirees, bo moden, losha ngakatar oldu ngi, le gorgmiu. Guktia, di, tirgeel bebir, ah, senator, eh, la, kongu oldu ngi, ak tirgeel oldu ngi, sel, de la President, asay ngi, mira retirees, moral mongma ududiu. Eh, ghamam, el tri, mate del senator, oldu ngi, ma, diregal, bo moden, losha gi, oldu ngi, ma, bo molau du diu, eh, molatkar ghamam. Mong, di gi gi da, tungi, el sum, digang eh, klerga, ngaro olgol.
Senator Lenzel Vasilius. Senator Gubai, gi ku inabo.
Oi.
Senator Steven Sonche, kwartei, mo abstainel twice, sumlang. Senator Tite, imru remosau.
Oi.
Senator Umi, sanabau.
Oi.
Senator Vasuvi, El Tapsuino.
Oi.
Senator Andrew Tabalwal.
Oi.
Senator Salvador Sadoy Talams.
Oi.
Senator Misori, Bangalbips.
Yes.
Vice President Kray Mariur.
No.
President Okonts Pables.
Oi.
Senator Lenzel Vasilius.
No.
Mr. President, ah, sekiyo. Na lies matulno.
Mas sentio, el ngirel tiha, house bill 11 dash 134, dash 15 S, HD2, ST7, CD1, amlamar tiha, blan asenet. Ma, mal mrengasuli. Vice President Floridir.
Vice President, eh, se gi da, rogi aurele, dar abil calendar. Digunti, asutuises, eh, President.
Surtuises. Tal, gada ngia sessionel, mora ordel. Au era, paska, bulara le flore di, ku aisar gi dal, washe, akmo extended tiha special sessioner gi dal, al mutel five more days.
Okay.
Okay, Floridir.
Vice President, gada amla ra, bil calendar, gada na, rogi ra bil calendar, ma, do gora, item 12, resolution calendar. Diha ngara, aurefral, ma adaption, do gora, item 13, introduction of bills. Diha, ndirgal do gora, item 14, introduction of resolutions. Alaga, do gora, item 15, ayel, Misselens Kommunikation, eh, President, laltame, eh, move, da, spend, ra calendar, the place ra, under, ah, Misselens, ah, Kommunikation, ah, Misselens Kommunikation, 11, 11 dash 1232, ma, 11 dash 1233.
Si la motion, lemlamadung esegan, ma dosis, wa, ayegel tablor, ah, Misselens Kommunikation, eh, tirgeel rogu il goongi du oi. Om tok. Namwaisai, Floridir.
Vice President, tiha gi, ayel, makoni, ta betlaad, no, tiha gi, dal Kommunikation, eh, Misselens Kommunikation, 11 dash 1225, and mal mutra, 11 dash 1233. Eh, thoban, eh, item 16, ah, Misselens Business.
Michelle Nus Business. Senator, Talams.
Sumla, Mr. President, tealtiha le, gada goamal mosamerial, el senator, sel, plavodagro guida, nget tiha minimum wage, dimnaga tiha supplemental budget. Agundra, Mr. President, kmo tiha minimum wage, ma, ah, haus singa, tablor ayegu uli, ar adar bela, di toder belau. Eh, gada mal ngat ngata, ar adar belau, tiramo, ma benefita tiha supplemental budget, mosave dal goongi tiha minimum wage, mo 425 cents hour, tiha di entry level. Eh, momure la ragara, October 1, rela 2024. Di regal seltan supplemental budget, eh, Mr. President, eh, nosave dal goongi, ma, national government, tamomusel, eh, responsibility, ra, palau haus singadoritil, per sel megalon. Mong, diha, lut, mo per ngi, ah, national government, tamosave el per sel. El megalon, ngiloa national develop, ngiloa national government, ngulmsa, palau haus singadoritim, te per ngi. Ndisera, ngaseklo ngil, eh, 8% and 6%, eh, mlo dal saba la ayel, repayment ra loan, eh, loto da, palau haus singel, per sel loan. Mong, mrengasulela, chairman inabo, mosave el, el mo, ayegre dal blan, sel, ra, palau haus singel, gi el pay mori, waisel national debt service, ma, national government, tamo pay, ah, segi dal loan. Mong, mosave, sava el free, abai, ayel, ngara 500,000 dollars, mong, mosave la, palau haus singadoritil, el cantinu, loto da loan, ndagal clo, din, etalista, mosave il omu, le, el loto da loan, eh, mortirial aden, ma, lo spe, el ngirel, ogadu, raplirin, mortirgeel displaced, tirgeel, eh, new homeowner, sir, tirgeel, lo siga, au do, anis au do, di ngirela, ar ipes, raplirin, tirgeel disabled. Osisi utaimi, Mr. President, eh, tiha gi supplemental budget, eh, le, increase, eh, sel operating budget, ra, palau haus singadoritil, ra, 135,000, eh, mo 250,000. Agumrat, mosse, ngire dal mutel, eh, increase, ngira, nextel budget, asumorniatiha al, le, ngire dal melisi, ra, ar adal laurior, ayel, karo sel agencies, ra, ah, government, ter belau, and sava il mo productive, eh, ngil, ah, performance, tir, eh, mosamerial laurior, sel, sasekla aududir. Agumrat, lasi sel, tiha gi, supplemental budget, te bladengi, abetog ayegel, betoga ayegel ngasel, logiwa subsidy, mortirial adablur ngara, ngari aududir, eh, 15,000 dollars, eh, merio, tirgeel diha lo ngargere, Mr. President. Tiradal, mrengasulela, haus of delegates, le, ngari sel provision, ngat tiha supplemental budget, sel 733. Eh, le, saurit tiha Saudi, eh, developing loan, ah, damre, dal ngu, lo, po giu tiha gi, dal supplemental budget. Ndiga damlo, on togo ti segi dal aldasu, Mr. President, le, mo exempt, tiha gi, dal loan, ah, Saudi Arabian merbelau, mong, mo diha, pe tax, eh, osisi utaimi, mo diha, lotirak, sel uli, open government. Eh, le, msi si adurulela, asenet, le, on togo segi, dal provision, sel, supplemental budget, eh, nosave, haus of delegates, le, lotir, kli tiha gi, dal. El posicioner asenet, ma, tengil beti, nding ngire dal, logiwa, or resolution, eh, mo address, sel Saudi loan. Tiha minimum wage, eh, Mr. President, ah, ayegel lamdu teal ulao, le, saba mo effect, ayegel mi gare shobai, ma, ganstraksion amaterial samo. Oh, mas, ndi tiha gi, dal Saudi loan, eh, Mr. President, ah, dumukla, blugul, ngire dal, damre, dal goongi, or resolution, el ngirel, tiha nga di, olu la, 2.5% ta olngi. Eh, diha, bulbel sel, ah, national government. Tirgeel, adal molona, tiha ludod, tirgeel, mo per ngi. Eh, tiha nga mal, di direkter, ngira, national development bank, eh, diha, gora, palau haus singadoritil. Eh, laltame, ayegel loan, eh, loto da, national development bank, angara 7, eh, mo 8%. Eh, mo 9%, eh, tiha nga di, 2.5%. Mong, saba, eh, la unit, ah, national development bank, ba, bo, ngutel loan, eh, bo, lo lasma, loto da ngi, mor adar belau, eh, diha, gora babra, ayimba 100. Eh, tiha, Saudi loan, eh, Mr. President, ah, dumukla, tutelal, el ngirela, sel appropriate gamitil, oba, sel resolution. Tiha nga mulngi se, ra, ngirela haus sing, ma, aggregation, ma, mutel bebir, ra, amge gare shobai, ra, ansel ablur belau. Ki damadengi, klasia aggregation, abotekla blugul, el ngirela food security, gi. Eh, tiha gi, dal Saudi loan, asabe, eh, mong usutiria, ar adar belau, el ngirela, planar tir, ah, bekl sils. Tiha, Saudi loan, eh, Mr. President, ah, 15 million, eh, sel gota raget, meski da 5 million, onegara raget, meski da 4 million. Eh, waisel, mo mutra, onge imranak, eh, meski da, grace period, eh, five years, eh, 20 years, eh, Mr. President. Agumrat, mosel gamitil, oba, atnaku, senator Vasilius, ngia, ungrasel, ayel, tablor resolution, ah, gamitin, eh, bo, sava il, or itiha laurior, mong, sava il, ar adar belau, damre, dal mori, elaisa, eh, ga gi, dal tiha, le, ngar, sel abluat, eh, mia, diha, el laltame. Eh, agumrat, mo tiha gi, dal minimum wage, tar ayel, iu se, la, amokte, regi, eh, gudirut, eh, me tiha blan asenet. Ma, mal mrengasulela, rogu senatos, eh, olngi ta, support, ra, roguilad, el ngirel sel Saudi loan, eh, mo, ngel, sel, eh, Asian Development Bank loan, eh, di 1%. Eh, blalu, waisa gi, da, eh, senator inabo, mong namo, available, merablur belau, eh, di, ona Minister of Finance, eh, mo waisa, ngire, eh, mong, anra, di, tele, lo, lo, distribution, eh, ngitil, segi, dal loan. Dimlegi gi, de, Mr. President, mrengasule, ma, rogu senatos.
Senator Vasilius.
Sumlang, ra, teal, President, ra, asenet, ma, gada, Misselens, mdisoal before, mosel, eh, Misselens Kommunikation, eh, 11, 1231, se, Misselens, eh, lamie, ayke ulto, ra, ayegro guk, betogol papier, eh, ulgulu, sel, lo, ra, adal, ngirel tiha togora, eh, ah, Saudi loan. Mong, lamie, hin si, ra, ra, adra bang, ngari ngi, ayegel, teangamin, ngar al selt, mga, po, gumuy, ak tiho, eh, reference, el morning, washe, motaran, umuywa ayegi. Eh, diregal, motaran, eh, umuywa, ayegel, bebir, ah, papier, gada, ngi, la, gi gi, bebir, eh, information, eh, se, eh, President, ra senet, msel may, eh, gada, mo, oh, mes, eh, guk, amangatmokrtiha, tiha togora Saudi loan. Me, gu dakiyalo, washe, manmso la, ngatangaqal Salvador Talams, eh, lo, menson ngi. Eh, ndi, segi, di, eh, senator Talams, ah, washe, ngire dal, momgatakli, eh, malmungin, mong, diha, da, kiwa, false, perspesh, eh, false information, logiwa, atletail, laurior, eh, mora, adablu, oi, gada, meru laureren. Eh, sel, 2.5% el omol gori, ngirela 15 million, se nga, sel, MTT, lo meski da au do, sel bol per ngi, ah, bang, pa, ndirgah, bododonglia, overhead cost, ra bang, eh, mumutelang. Mesel bododongli, segi, di, eh, bodogu, kung, eh, bodosal, ngi. La, ikan, eh, dirgabetoga, ngaralela, ah, gamitil, oh mes, eh, sel loan document, tangara, al selt, ndi sel, obodongmenson, eh, tiha togora, akmo asenet, ah, akmal, lo, plakarangri, eh, mulubut, er sel, language, ra la, eh, tiha supplemental, el which, eh, nide, dal inform, eh, language, eh, mengatmokrtiha loan. Ma, tiha ngit, eh, washe, oi, gada, motaran, mengatmokr ngi, eh, oh mes ngi, eh, mor, sel, gotru ngil, turab, turabtaq, eh, tretelil. Eh, gora, eh, oh, oh, oh mes ngi, rogu, eh, mo oltopder ngi. Segi, da, aktol, ngit, er segi, di, kha, sumlang, mo menson ngi, nding, sel, omdele, ankle, eh, ngiregal metwad, eh, udeli, eh, subda, lo, aisa, kla, mra, ngal ngirel, tiha nga dangi, sumlang.
Senator Inabo.
President, eh, disoal, gamin, ta, tiha gi, tiha, eh, miscam, eh, 11 dash 1231, segi, dal, ulsa, drangia, eh, Senator Vasilius, mong, Senator Vasilius, al toga, kaltel papier. Imorababingi, la, mora attorney general. Mesel, domeser, sel, babingi, la, attorney general, lemla, respond, el meri, washe, attorney general, eh, al saba el, eh, masa, dak tiha loan, eh, mor olbi, ra, lulau, le, nguk, eh, el masaudak tal loan, emo olbi ra lula, len, nguk attorney general, omteera executive branch. Mongari ngia, senet, legal council, nguk gele, ngse ora, a senet, ngirela, i gel questions ra, Senator Basilius, ngara alsel sel babil ngel. Ongerunge, Mr. Presidente, el babil ngela, Senator Basilius, amora, a Minister of Finance. Mong, a senet, amle mitra Presidente, ma Minister of Finance, ilgele tegele loan. Mong, ondas, emla, emle, entera i gel rugui, el questions senet, amle, ngari ngil, ilgele tal Saudi Development Fund loan. Ongerel, babil ngel, Mr. Presidente, amlo ra Presidente, NDBP. Mong, kadamasa nga response ra Presidente, NDBP, emlamie, may twenty-nine, daytaringi, mal smodi, sma i gel rugui, el questions, el, ilgele tal loan. Mong, ngabedangia kamama, amle, kanfri kamama house. Atara, amle, kotel meringla, lo lubutaringi, tal, albi la bladapasaringi, i gel, i gel il, angal gele tal Saudi Development Fund loan. Mong, tamral, emla motutawe, te di kol, wasi, emlutel ma i gel loa. Makpi, isualo wa isekmula sing, mal, amle, maknitra randira, maudaswira, malutai gel itomdas, wasi, teangamal ungil tal, monsebe la, blur bela, el mor ngia, funding, el mora housing. Ma, ak, tirngasiya, Senator Basilius, el masaudra two, two and half percent el interest, endenenguk mo masauda, kurakmula sing administrative cost, mara. Mong, ndiaga administrative cost tal loan, adi administrative cost, i gel National Development Bank, al momru la, document, ma babier ilgele ra, adal, me malati al loan. Ma, segele uli, Development Bank, sel bodola ya loan ngi, asumga first time homeowner, en eight percent. Le segele, dalongolela, two and half percent, ma eight percent, segele ya cover administrative cost ra National Development Bank. El atngilusel ten percent, el housing loan, en me nine percent, tena ridusel interest rate artir. Mong, segele, nguk mo cover administrative cost ra Development Bank, kasel dalongolela, two and half percent, ma nine percent. Segele cover administrative cost ra Development Bank, ma ondas, ndiaglo gele, sel karungu, de gele say. Ah, apaido li taringi, wasi, makrangel mut segele, el interest rate ra Development Bank, al mutel merio, maybe mo six percent. Le six minus two point five, ah, three point five percent ra interest, amal, tirgasebele cover interest ra, ma administrative cost ra National Development Bank. Mong, kadamasa, teang wasi, mal, lungil tal, eh, we hope, wasi, kadamal, ulit, sel bulsebele Development Bank, aluk, ongaseor tirigel displaced, at, gidet tal, mal omes, abetogal utamal return. Gidet tal, dirgamle, receive, ra miscam, ra lastal session, lo aisa, wasi, ta ngari ngar displaced, ra, ah, tarahangar lurior. Mal, bol sebele tegele displaced, Presidente, al motalgi, blangariwa interest ra loan artir, bol sebele ilgutmoklatla ngakli. Ma, maldi, olngit, segele, wasi, bol sebele edel, kansi dere, tal loan, el merengada, bol sebele edel, emo multe, mor ngia, ah, additional loan ra Development Bank, assebele lospe, lo ngaseora. Di segele, mislenios, ngage, Mr. Presidente, merengasaula.
Senator Whips.
Solara, tal, Mr. Presidente, al ronde rondeura, mislenios, ndi, tal, o mal interesting subject. Tal Saudi Development Fund loan, akmo motogo, this would be the lowest interest rate loan bladungu. Ah, di godongli, el altaima, udo, lospe, NDBP, ela, ngani, ngara five percent, six percent, even approaching seven percent. That's the reason why, tal olbi la, not of the total initiatives, one of them is, po moladi passit. A proposal, either, or their till, wasi, moladi passit, odobat tal cost, ra udo, den merio. Sel bele ya cost, tal udo, lospe ngi, then their interest rates can be lower when they loan it out. Mong, you know, this is one of the opportunities, sel se edel, mora lower interest rates, mora adra blu, lospe anis. Mong, andim, ne soal, mege, sel point, len, if we don't lower the cost of money, cost ra udo, lospe NDBP, their interest rates will never come down, len gele cover a cost as well, so. Eh, mora togo, sel kanfri, amle meringi, Mr. Presidente, tal, language, sel be proposal ngia house, which, ndimlakal, ngeni ngia senet. Eh, senet, amlo ngi, odo ra house, ilgele la language, walongong, alul bela, el momasaudak tal loan. Senet, auk medor, sel position, wasi, gidamal, odo ra Presidente, ma Minister of Finance, intention, executive branch, through the resolution only, they felt was sufficient. Mo segele, togo lula ba, kanfri, garra senet, em no sebele, mo doora, adra house, olngit, artir, metegil ngay. Mo do tova i gel language, ngara alsel, supplemental budget. Amraniya, the ball is in our court, whether we wanna do it or not, via through resolution. Ediregat, mno ngi, understanding, ilgele, obengela house, wasi, akmo soni, a soni. A senet, ongil tal resolution, emmetov da, agora opinion, aging, obisera Presidente, House of Delegates. Sel se edel, mutel madadu, alsum, ngirede, ma, amendal ulbela, omdi sel, positioner senet, lo senega, do longong, ulbela, ilgele tal loan, adol mol meriim, medo si, arugul tal, edagut, teang, teang, mal, sel, mo sebele, National Development Bank, gid. Motirigel, ader mal, lospe anis, lo mgodora blirir, through a low interest rate loan. Mong, so, tal, Mr. Presidente.
Sula, Senator Ira Bangla, Senator Mariur.
Presidente, kuadi, o gel, agumdas, wasi, sel fifteen million, el dingilul, me mingi, Ra Development Bank, ma, housing, agumdas, se se, al, dingilul, mstregal, toblol, ah, but loan, outel mora, aden, ding, government apen ngi. I gel, mal, ding, udo, mora Development Bank, ma housing. Ma i gel udo, galakta, di motil, lo, rur, tal gal, ndiaglo paybaga, meri government, ten government apen segele. Segele, agumdas, se, se, keltmiklil, mora i gal toblol, al, ah, ma i gele, gele de, omes, akmadel, wasi, na besa manismentra bang, amge le, mo ngilo, o, omes, tir, mo do, tir, len, ela, dimlakar, sel, meeting, mne, la, i gan, ding, ga gele, senator, mne, wasi, i gel, regora, do ulto, de gong, tumne, write off, ngara, five million. Ma i gele, agumdas, i gele, gele de, omes, enga gabai, di regal, wasi, tal, dirgul, wa iseringi, ya, Senator Inabol, wasi, te dirgamle, eh, sign, tal twenty-five million dollar loan, ki da, gele ngere ngi. Ya, mne, do, wasi, ngari ngia, sel ten million, asabele oba, lo mosse state, esel fifteen, amde, walgora contingency, funde one percent a interest. Sen de, assebele, mul more, tegele, guk, sum, gado mal, ma, into housing, de, assebele, mul more, segele. Agumdas, one percent, auk marior, tal, interest, tegele, Saudi loan. I gele, i gel, agumdas, tal, orade, gado, mla, obengere ngi, loan, mde. Ma kuadoto, i gele, Presidente, kuasen, bebir, gado mal, orade, mal, mal, mende, gado, dirgal, mo ngilo, gado, omes, wasi, ngari i gel, bladotmo, krela. Anganiya, bladotmo, mdirgal, omes, segele, Presidente, aktivo, ne soal, mutakla i gele, wasi, segele, udo, fifteen million, debilingi, housing, ma Development Bank. A government apen ngi, ma i gel toblol, alada, diaglo, haro, inter, payment ra loan, ma interest ra loan, adaglo, haro. Malsum, te, segele, walagal, haro, interest, malo, nemrgo ya, pre, interest ra, a bang, el mora, ok, kantela. Akpandel, i gel, amle ul, amle, i gel, ngalakra sixty thousand, morba, ba, amle, onga, six percent, el morba, ba, Development Bank. Abait, tegele, housing, i gel, mneriwa sixty thousand, i gele, mneriwa interest, ngi. Mo sa, i gele, i gel, dirgal, assebele, omes, mese, wasi, tal, udo, gado, gado, moran, mo sebele, housing, development, ra blu bela, malu, beneng. Sula, Presidente.
Namal, mosol, aligi, da, dehadu, di baitte, gado, ngara, mislenios, mong, Senator.
Information, do aise, Presidente.
Sen, sula, Presidente, di, tria tal, Presidente, kuatay, el al, lo, lo, pule Presidente, gado, bang, la, ngil, sils, ra blu bela, sils, omlilt. Aldi, bododonglia, wasi, gado, lamsa, daian, i gel, pisisim, alto, ra ngalge. A STA, mapi, amla omreg, i gel, sils, omliltartir, amari, stela, amla omreg, ayotchi, amla omreg, ma i gel de start. Er al, savadonge, amitanti high school, al toda ngalge. Ah, ongim, luro, trume, al gabsi, la buile, i gel, outlying school. Eang, nama, plilioma, ngiaw, al toda ngalge, sils, omlilt, i gel, school, aikil, lurior. Eh, kotul, luro, trume, edil, gabsi, la buile, i gel, rugul, school, a babaldav. Omur, ramalke ok, mo, anor, eang, emliokra, i guk, mo toda, amli, i gel, elementary school, al toda ngalge. Esel, trume, e, gabsi, la buile, idai, maturest, pheheris, ma, ke, esma, min, al toda ngalge. Eh, nineteen, longe de lurior, eh, palava school, al toda ngalge. Eh, ulabong, le, lurior, gabsi, la buile, ongawa, lurior, eh, bela, mo tok, school, al toda ngalge. President, segele, lomra, gado, ngar, teang, mal, odresia, aklo, lomlang, sal, mora, adam, mara din. I gel, bekal, bharada, ngari, abul bela, un di, adam, mara din, la akusit, sekutmuk, ktral ngalge. Et mora school, edo motutu, odra school. Ar principals, mar sensei, mar adra school, abetoga, albanler, ma i gel rugur, ring, le, tir, mo dumra school, le, mstir, ngalge, aulmog, al toda ngalge. Kadamal, ndi, ngar, teang, odresia, ulabong, sal, mora, adam, mara din, maralga school. Mar bekla, ader tir, auror, school, wasi, selbre de laurerir, eh, aulmog, ngani, ngil, sils, omliltartir, gid, al toda ngalge. I gele, ngalge, al toda, tir, aklu, lurior bela, wada, ngar, teang, ngalge. Ediregat, bododonglia, wasi, tal supplemental budget, angani, atlibil, ngari, alsel, mora ngalge. Dimlakas, school, mo oy, dimlakang, mo oy, ra budget, pasis, balela, school, yangani, atlibil, emol, chance, lurior, schooler. Mo ulmog, mo ngil, aragartil, ngani, alel, udo, mora school. Makmerengasaw, segele, gman, trostingil, olbi, agal, ulao, mal, motog, anganaklil, wisert, kini, ngalge. E gado, mo ekla, udo, mora ngalge, eki, mil, wasi, mora ngalge, edo, mul, segele, lurior. Endiag, udo, mora ngalge, el, ulan, dumomukit, arugul, udo, mora school, emoniar, en, amgasaksel bela, ma bela, ra aklu. President, makpi, ogyu, segele tal, mal, merengasulem, mal, idrisib, al, mosse, kutmukit, tal, luriore, e obengem, mar bekla, a, o, ngal, ngalge, ma school, ablu bela. Sula, Presidente.
Mosol, Senator Tabalual, mal, lungil, aisil, gele la, schooler, da, lurior bela. Nishbe, lo, aisil, gid, wasi, i gel bekla, high school, entela, total, ngalgal, togra, high school, di high school.
Sula, Presidente, mal, ngari ngi, ding, mal, de, ba, ul, ngar, teang, klotu, bil, el, ngi, mungora, mo dekal, ngi. Ndiang, sel, mosme, segele, tabadi.
Okay, mosol, ndi, kansion, gid, alsum, while, di sin, ngalgra, high school, toder bela. Sebele, mora, alice, rugui, ina, fau, udo, raskalasi, balu, ben, temor, piscisim, onga, ram, di, bododongi, bol, sebele, mo, understandertir. Senator Tabalual.
Aktege, buri, Presidente, mal, kausit, du, du, da, sen, diaglo, ngalgal, apply, em ngai, ediag, udo, mori. Alungir. Andas, be, se, mal, katia, scholarship, se, tango, tete, ngir, ngalgal, apply, emo, mes, i gel, ngari, o, mstengela, scholarship. E, omi, biringi, ma, bekla, ngal, tirigel, ngil, atingartir, e, ngar, ba, atingartir, e, ma i gel, kamog, lurior bela, atlibil, ngar, ba, olga, mortir, e, bekla, ngal, gadi, mori, al mortir. Diag, ngal, gadi, se, mal, kudil, la, sen, diag, a, ngal, gadi, mo oy, alsum, gado, amle, apply, emo, ah, togo, ngir, ma school, e, ga, odresia, application, ra, ursel, magim, da, tu, la, do, first. Alsum, ngari, segele, te, ngar, teang, la, sen, diag, ngal, emla, motmukis, sel, babir, emo oy, ta, togo, udo, mora school. Sula, Presidente.
Sula, Senator Tabalual, Maria Agudo, Senator Mosau.
Sula, Mr. Presidente, ndirek, merang, mege, i gal, congratulations, el mora rugul, graduates, my promotees. Eh, Mr. Presidente, damral, damral, gora, el te, la senkyo, eh, Mr. Presidente, ngal, trate, de, emla, ngia, invitation, ra, ngal, gel, bela, ra, blu, ra Portland, de, mle, gid. Mong, la, ngi, sel, gora, personal trip, gid, de, mlong, egu, holding, artir, tal, me, togubets, el President's Day celebration, etan, nomre, al weekend. Mr. Presidente, ndiguspe, tal, tal, le, baybo, kuadi, eu, aisai, gel, bebir, a, concern, trigal, ngare, i gel, bela, lo, luligit, gid, wasi, a, the, me, assebele, share, meri, beklad, edo, luriol, gid. Agote, Mr. Presidente, mal, tamal, olngit, wasi, bol sebele, msa, sel, pending, el bill, eh, Senator Mariur, el malasme, msa, mo, krsel, togo, absenti, balot. Wasi, mal, lagi, mal, semariar, el partner, tal, el senkyo, ra, bettal, tam, el mori, a senkyo, ding, for some reason, ngual, sal, mal, gora, kade, ba, time, ma i gel, balot, artir, awabu, la, albi, sel, deadline, ra, temela, absenti, balot. To ngit, wasi, assebele, edo, edo, lurior, say, edo, sama, klim, al, merang, mlsenkyo, merang, bo, ngati, el il, mo, ngari ngia, ah, el mosbe, ilmo, casta, bu, artir, eda, qant, ra, bu, tra, each and every one of them, ngar, i gel, bela, sel, lameltir, el mosbe, kyo. Ongerunge, Mr. Presidente, te, direk, mal, blakakl, ma blakakl, gid, sa, the, bul, wasi, man, namukla, dalongokra, ader bela, to, ni, segele, northwest, eh, part, ra, abrigel, toblor ngi. Ma, tarah, on, trir, Mr. Presidente, wasi, gora, mal, ngari, a, council, office, ablu, ra, kwam, ma saival, ngari, adadal, ngar, Hawa'i. Bel, gora, blamo, time, assebele, guk, agumdas, wa, guk, ngari, adadal, ngar, sel, guk, kol, ngasewa, i gel, guk, gora, mo, terbesula, togo, awabasport, ma, abebira, togo, lospe, anis, waringi, tirigel, guk, adadal, ngar, i gel, bela. Mr. Presidente, mong, ngogut, tegele, tal, mal, di, direk, mo, merengasulir, trigai, gid, mle, invite, trigid, segele, tal, tal, al, ngal, ngal, gel, bela, Mr. Augustino, Augustin, ma, Fred, orak, ma, tirigel, students, ra Eastern Oregon University, to, uni, Benny Moses, ma, Alilai, ma, wa, goto, tirigel, students, ne, arrangers, sel, guk, gora, mle, ot, ngale, de, mortir. Et, te, direk, mal, old, rokla, mege, i gal, do, yo, school, meri, gid, rugui, Mr. Presidente, et, direk, olngit, wasi, bol, ngani, atelid, ebol, se edel, guk, mom, da, vestir, ngalge, de, ngara, i gel, bela. Ulo, gora, Mr. Presidente, i gel, wa, i gel, ulukosung, you know, damral, direk, oheng, et, tirigel, guk, ubte, er, gid, el mora, Fespac, et, direk, mal, oheng, eh, wish them, good luck, tirigel, guk, ubte, er, gid, el mora, Marshall Islands, et, tal, merang, mle, microgames. Sula, Mr. Presidente.
Sula, Senator Mosau, diga Agudo. Diga Agudo.
Digya.
Dabora announcement, Senator Mariur.
Mr. President.
Senator Sangbau.
Sula, Mr. Presidente, gamitir, gora, tourism, environment, and maritime, ma, ngatmo, kra, meeting, ilgele, la, house bill, eleven, sixty, six. Tal, Mr. Presidente, masauda, sel, togo, recycling, ya, meeting, amo, on, trir, ra, ngelo, ngara, solid waste, ra, Andrea Public Works, ma, diregal, tirigel, guk, ngara, go, state, solid waste program. Eh, Mr. Presidente, tal, atlibil, gora, aklo, economic impact, ringi, legislation, ma, olngit, ra, gamitim, members, ma, senetos, sel, sabari, rakhmal, male, ating, senetos, sel, diregal, sabari, ebol, se edel, gora, meet, et, trigai, gid, el, ngara, et, al, program. Et, diregal, du, sa, i gel, guk, response, ra, business community, diregal, amle, so, is. Entel, gibil, gora, mo, kro, i gel, kal, albol, gid, mo, wisai, i gel, ma, ndiregal, guk, ngari, a, tal, gibil, gora, kantar, na, business community, gid, mo, agumit, ebol, se edel, gora. Ongerel, lurior, a next figure, June twelve, ra, two PM, ra, sale, light, officer, gid, ra, lurior. Sula, Mr. Presidente.
Sula, Senator Sangbau. Sel bill, ra, Senator Mariur, ilgele, la, senkyo, ngara, ngara.
Ngara, ngara, JGA, unus.
Ngara, JGA. Ta, pa, chairman, JGA.
Ah, ngire, bang.
Ndia, eren, gangi, ngar, teang, di, dongo, mor, attention, ngi, mle, omes, ngi, ya, gid, senator, el, debe, la, mot, atlibil, me, o, du. Di, wa, i gel, blaktung, gado, ngit, tanglungu, ngere, la, omrol, la, senator, el, debe. Edi, klut, lam, klat, gid, wasi, akmo, extend, ra, special session, gid, ra. mutu five more days, senator Mariur.
Marchum diga modalan announcement presidente move dongliti al blais absentu kolofte chair.
Si damotion namdu ne se ma tirigel ogul gongeldu oi.
Oi.
Mto namoi si.